Words of encouragement. I believe others have represented us for so long. I think it's time for us to take the seat of power. I just did a little bit of math here. You know, the city divvies out, the city has about eighty-five billion dollars in budget. And eighteen percent of that goes to each of the boroughs. I think eighteen percent comes to Queens. And I just did the math. I think there is about twelve city council districts in Queens. And I further divvied it up and did the math. And so each city council district, for example, city council district twenty-four, Shoma can correct me, Anthony Miranda is here, they can correct me, will get one point something billion dollars. That, uh, so city council district twenty-four will get one point, I actually did the math here, really. One point, uh, two billion dollars. She will get that chance to spend that money in our community. And so it's a very powerful position. Not only that, she's also paid well. She will have staff members from our community and other communities as well. So these are positions. And she can advocate for our community members to be represented in various agencies who in turn will make decisions and get award contracts to our organizations. So we know others have played this game for very long. We know it, and we have not gotten the funding. We know that as well. They have come and take pictures with us and delivered lectures at our masjids. In turn, we got nothing. So it's time for us to get something. And the way to do it is put our candidates there. So I don't want to say too much now. Uh, I would like Dr. Wadud Bouya to say something.
Thank you, Joheb. In fact, I didn't have come here to speak. I came here to listen from everybody and especially Shoma. And, uh, you know what? I don't live in Queens and I'm not a voter. But I don't know why I had the opportunity. All the campaign reached to me. And then I, I felt it good, but I would be feeling much better if there would be one candidate only. So all those, she would get much more vote from the Bangladeshi community. Now, we are unlucky that we have five other candidates. But so far, I see from the background, education and experience, Shoma Said is on the top. So I wish her the best of luck. I hope it, the momentum stays on. And then I wish her best of luck. That's all I can say. But I cannot vote. I wish I could vote, but I still wish and hope that she comes up on the top. Thank you very much for giving me the chance. And thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Wadud Bouya. Next, I would like to invite our brother Nasir Ali Khan Paul. He's a very senior member, very active in politics. And I know his words carry a long way. Um, I, I would like for him, and I, I know he's very astute in politics. So I, I know he's going to bring up some issues that will also put Shoma over the edge in, in this race. So Brother Nasir Ali Khan Paul, I, I, did he go away from the camera for a second? Okay, so we'll call on him next. Uh, Anthony, do you want to speak?
Whatever you like, you know, again, I'm just here.
Let's, uh, let's go with Anthony Miranda. You know, he is the Queens, a former Queens Borough presidential candidate. He did very well in the race and he's going to run in flushing for city council. He is supporting Shoma Said. And behind him is the, he's the founding president of Latino Police Officers Association. So that, we're going to get some Latino votes for Shoma, Shoma as well. And some pesos. Just joking, okay. All right, Anthony Miranda, please take it away.
Well, listen, it's, it's an honor being part. You know that we've endorsed Shoma already. Uh, we believe in her campaign. Uh, we know that she's the strongest candidate. And we are doing an active campaign in the Latino community for her. So, you know, again, when everybody runs races, they tend to dis- discount different communities, right? When other people run, they discount your community, they discount ours. Well, this, we haven't reached out to Latino community at all, but we are absolutely entrenched in the Latino community and pulling out that vote for Shoma. And I think that Shoma's background is ideal because what happens to her, the things that she, the fights, the causes that she's addressed in the past, defending immigration rights, defending against abuses. That's exactly what we're facing right now. And that's the message that I'm sharing with our community. Uh, so I think it's a great combination. I'm, I'm just happy to be a part of her team and being able to support her and, uh, and combine our communities because the power rests where we can all come together and support one candidate towards her victory.
Thank you so much, Anthony. Uh, I see Brother Said Muzaffar. I know he has a little, uh, short, uh, short on time. He has, he had to, um, you know, kind of join in the midst of other meetings. Uh, I'd like Brother Said Muzaffar, who is the current BOT chairman of Jamaica Muslim Center to say a few words. We would also like to see his beautiful face here, uh, in the, in the camera. Brother Said Muzaffar?
Assalamualaikum and good evening, everyone. I just want to make one disclaimer. I am representing any organization. I'm actually speaking on behalf of myself. So I just want to make the records clear. So regarding Shoma, I have known her for a few many years. And I think she is a woman of integrity and honesty. And that's one thing that's lacking nowadays in, um, in the individuals who are actually involved with, uh, politics. So I think I'm, I'm very hopeful that people will take notice of her qualities, of all of the qualities besides those. And also she is maintaining a very transparent record. So, um, you know, that gives me additional hope that she will represent, uh, the community in District Twenty-four. Later on, I would like to hear from Shoma, like she said that she met Jean Genaro. I would like to know what was her conversation. Also, I would like to know how she is communicating with other community members in the District Twenty-four besides the Bangladesh community. Thank you.
This is why, like Brother Said Muzaffar, not only does he think about himself, but he also thinks about the candidate. All right, excellent question to the, uh, for the candidate to consider a, a delve us into the conversation. But, uh, let us hear from the others as well. Please make a note of that, uh, from Brother Said Muzaffar. Brother Said Muzaffar, your partner over there, uh, Khawaja Mizan Hassan. I see him disappear. Uh, we, if we can also text everybody else to join, uh, that would be great. So we can have a great, healthy conversation in the last leg of the race. Shoma does not need so much money anymore. But if you want to, uh, you know, contribute to her campaign, she's not going to say no, and I'm not going to say no. Okay, so if, uh, Shoma, if you can also share the link. I know people have expressed to give something. So just give something to this way. We know we're with her. Uh, I see Yvonne Paracha, uh, I believe part of the campaign as well. Uh, I would like to invite our senior member, Brother Nasir Ali Khan Paul. I, I see that, uh, I did call on him, uh, initially. Please, uh, say a few words. I, I know he, he has been fighting for you tooth and nail from the beginning. Uh, he has been very vocal. He has defended you so much against other vultures and predators. And, um, he's actually done so much for your campaign. I do acknowledge that. And so Brother Nasir Ali Khan Paul, please do say a few words.
Assalamualaikum. Thank you, Joheb, for your kind words. Shoma, uh, Shoma Said, I support her fully, not partially. And like Joheb says, I'm fighting for her in our community. We saw recently there was a great competitor for Shoma. I don't want to be politically correct, okay, guys? I always like that. I born like that. Mohammed Ahmed, we saw about Mohammed Ahmed that his campaign funding has been disqualified her recently. And you know the reason? I was listening to the news that she was disqualified for, um, for some signature that for the cash donation, you must put a signature, whoever give the cash donation. So on that signature, lot of signature with the same, same hand, that duplicate, duplicate, I mean, one person signed like ten or twelve. And that's why they got caught and they disqualified her for the matching fund, if I'm correct. So if we see as a Bangladeshi community, we have a great leader of Bangladeshi community here, present, that if we see somebody is going to represent us, this kind of dishonest in the beginning with the fund, it's a shame for the Bangladeshi community. I feel ashamed myself. So it shouldn't happen. We should choose our candidate. And if the community leader does not stop this kind of nonsense, then in future, we will have a very bad reputation. We need a candidate like Shoma Said with an aw degree, with very respectful, very sincere, hardworking, soft spoken, humble. And she always talk on the points. No if buts, nothing on the points. So I'll urge all the member of the community who are present here, especially Dr. Wadud Bouya, he get a lot of influence and everybody. Whoever is here, they are all leaders, Mojafor, like my younger brother. So I'll urge them, please, we have few more days. Let's help Shoma Said. This is the first time we get a chance to put some Bangladeshi descent to the Council of New York City. There's no, I mean, uh, nobody from Bangladeshi community in the New York Council or anywhere. So this is the first chance. Let's take this chance and both, I mean, don't miss this opportunity. We shouldn't miss this opportunity. Just a little push from now, maybe another two weeks. We're going to work hard for Shoma and Insha Allah, Shoma will be, will making, our Bangladeshi community very proud. She will be the first time ever being a Bangladeshi, being a councilwoman. Thank you very much. God bless her.
Thank you, Brother Nasir Ali Khan Paul. Uh, I would like to now call on Sergeant Ershad Siddiki, who is part of our community. We cannot hear you. So something is wrong with the microphone system, yeah?
Unmuted?
Uh, no. He is unmuted, but something is probably on his end. He's unmuted.
Go to the next one. Go to the next one, Joheb.
Okay, no problem. I see our former president of Jamaica Muslim Center, Brother Khawaja Mizan Hassan is here. Uh, I do want to let you know, I have verified with our attorney here in the candidate that even though you represent a five oh one C three N organization, a masjid, I can mention your title. So I, I did pose that question. So, uh, Brother Khawaja Mizan Hassan, uh, please, you're not representing the organization itself, but I'm saying your title for, uh, that, you know, just to give you, uh, some, I, I would say respect. Uh, he's the former, uh, chairman as well as the president. And of course professionally, he is the chief at, I believe, Department of parole. Brother Khawaja Mizan Hassan.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. And good evening to all. It's a pleasure to speak for our candidate, Shoma Said. Uh, she is a really Jama- uh, Jamaica community product. And we should all support her. I will echo, I heard what Dr. Wadud mentioned, Wadud Bouya mentioned, that I'm not a voter. I'm also not a voter there, but I have a lot of relatives there, Insha Allah. And she has our support. And, uh, you know, we look, we are looking forward that, uh, she would be the best candidate for this upcoming election. And, uh, my friends and my relatives will be supporting her, Insha Allah. And, uh, you know, uh, one of the thing I was, I spoke, I was speaking to Joheb last night. I think it's last night, the day before last night, maybe, that we need one candidate from our community. And I think that will be the appropriate, uh, decision for us, for the community. Because, you know, uh, there was an election before with Larry Lanzman, and that was our Bangladeshi, uh, I forgot, I forget his name, from Briarwood. He lost the election by only six hundred votes. Fighting against Laurie Lanzman, and he lost by six hundred votes. If we can combine all of those, that's what I'm thinking. If you think ahead that, you know, if we can get one candidate, you know, let's speak, let's talk to them. Let's have the community leadership come up and settle up one candidate. And I think there's a very good chance for us make our candidate making up to that position, Insha Allah. And my, all my support is with Shoma. I've known her for many years and we are like family friends. And Insha Allah, uh, my support is with you and whatever, whatever you need from us, I'll be there, Insha Allah. So best of luck. Jazakallah. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you so much, Brother Mizan Hassan. I would also like to invite Brother Zulfakar Haider, who is part of the community in Jamaica, to say a few words. He is, uh, a CPA, I believe, right? Or an accountant?
No, 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 not CPA. I have a small business and thank you for inviting me today. As I can see that Bangladeshi community is growing up, uh, day by day. Four years ago, there was a one candidate, uh, T Rahman was running for city councilman. I believe, if I am not making any mistake. Today, we have six to seven, eight candidate running for city council, which is very good news because Bangladeshi community is growing up. And, uh, we are, what we are doing today and what, uh, you have organized in the past just to, uh, select the better candidate who will represent the Bangladeshi community. I, I applaud on that. And, uh, today's event for Shoma Said, I think she is fit for this job, city council, uh, woman. And, uh, I wish her good luck. And, uh, on voting day, we, we will be there, there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sergeant Siddiki, are you ready to come back on? Okay, same issue. Uh, I think it's the same issue we cannot hear. We'll go to Yvonne Paracha. I know she is a very close friend of Shoma Said, uh, to say a few words. And I, I do believe she lives in Queens area district. Yvonne, would you want to say a few words? I think that's Pachai, I said Paracha. That's a childhood friend of mine, Paracha. Yv- Yvonne? In, in that case, uh, I think we've covered everybody. Brother Raihan Jalali, do you want to say anything? Or our from, um, from, from the USA News Online, you, you want to say anything? Do you have any questions from the newspaper? Okay, I think you. Camera. Okay, in that case, Shoma, please take it away.
Thank you so much. Uh, Assalamualaikum and good evening. Thank you for, everyone for joining and thank you, Joheb, for moderating and organizing it. I want to thank the host and I want to thank everyone who joined tonight. Dr. Wadud Bouyan, um, Mr. Zulkar Haider, um, um, Nasir Khan Paul Ankil, uh, Mr. Anthony Miranda, Brother Ershad Siddiki, Mr. Latif, Mr. Raihan Jalali, um, Brother Kazamizan, who just had to leave, and also Said Muzaffar, brother, and Yvonne Pachai. And Shamim Pai from US News Online. Uh, we only have nineteen days left. So today is January thirteenth. My election day is on February second. And then early voting starts on January twenty-third till January thirty-first. And right now, we also have the mail-in ballot. If anybody for health reason or other reason cannot physically go do early voting or on election day, should be requesting absentee mail-in ballots right now. You can do it online. Exciting things are happening in my election. Firstly, um, we got the matching funds and, uh, uh, we'll be getting more money from the city as well. And, uh, and in terms of the campaign, we're out there canvassing, door knocking, phone banking. We picked up some great endorsement, uh, from number of, of elected officials as well as organizations, uh, from our impersonal capacity, from the former Queens Borough President candidate, Mr. Anthony Miranda, as well as his organization, National Officers, or, 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 National, National Latino Officer Association. So, uh, that's amazing for their support. We also have support from district leaders, Antonio Miranda, Liliana Mello, from Sonia Harvey, also from, um, um, from county committee individuals, Fahim Hamid, Maria Koffer and others. And then organizations such as, uh, the South Asian Political Action Committee, Bengal Democratic Club, Community Alliance Group, Muslim Community Forum. You have the, uh, Jamaica Bangladeshi Club and the Hindu Coalition. And everyone is very excited about this election. Why? Because my campaign focuses on representation, advocacy and bringing opportunities and real issues that really matter for people. Right now, what matters in my district? Employment. People are looking for jobs. They're underemployed. And we need to figure out how we can give them jobs so they can pay for, pay their rent, mortgage, so they don't get evicted. They don't fall into bad health. So we really need to focus on that. Education, what's been happening for the last eleven months? Eight hundred thousand students are doing remote learning out of the three hundred thousand doing hybrid. Once again, we're all remote now because of resurgence of pandemic. And we have issues about with digital divide, language accessibility, as well as funding for our schools. We have issues with small businesses. There's no funding. We don't have enough funding and relief. We need to pressure the federal government to give us funding to New York State. That's the only way we can get out of this mess. And you need leadership for that. You need to know who to go to. We cannot forget the property tax increases in this community since two thousand two, eighteen percent. And that happened under Jim Genaro. We cannot go back to that old leadership. We need to look towards the future. Their sales tax increase almost nine percent. It's unbelievable that immigrants, working class communities and the poor have to pay so much taxes on prepared food as well as clothings and other items. And not to forget, you know, we need police. We need to make sure our streets are safe. We need to make sure our police have the resources they need. We need to make sure our streets are clean. We need to make sure mass transit is on time. We need to make sure housing is provided for everyone. And we need to make sure property owners are not burdened with further tax increases. Because that's one thing that this city council, this mayor, might be looking to fit, to, to close the gap on budget shortfall. Because we have almost four billion dollar budget shortfall and more. And the state has almost fifteen billion dollar shortfall. So we need help from the federal government. Now, we're going into the last two and a half weeks of the election. What are we doing right now? And how can you help? Of course, donations are great. If you have not donated or you want to donate more, you can donate up to five hundred dollars if you're not conducting any business with the city. What that means is you can only donate up to one hundred twenty-five if you're doing business with the city. We are, we need words to get out to everyone within your circle when the election is, February second, about early voting and push everyone to go out and vote. Because that's what's going to make this election different. Is our communities, whether it's the Hispanic community, the black community, Muslim community, Bangladeshi American community, South Asian community, white community, everyone has to go out and vote. And this year, the first time, we have ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting means that one person, one voter can vote up to five people. But you don't have to, you're not required to. You need to understand that. You can, if you have your favorite candidate, you just vote for that person one. I'm your favorite, favorite candidate. And then you have the option. The reason I'm, I'm saying this, even though we have a few South Asian candidates, this seat is winnable. This seat is mine because with all of your help and the work that I'm doing, we can do it. And we have been doing the work. We have, I'm out there in, uh, Fresh Meadows. I'm out there in Briarwood, uh, Jamaica, knocking on doors. I'm talking to voters regardless of who they are because I am going to be representing, representing everybody in the community. And I know the dire needs of our communities in Jamaica. We need a senior center. We need a youth center. And earlier, Joheb was talking about the money that is allocated for each district. There are certain funds that are allocated to each district. They cannot be used for something else because they're, they're set. But there's the discretionary funds that each councilperson gets. In my district, so far, we have been getting seven hundred fifty thousand dollar a year, per year. So during my previous councilperson tenure of seven years, he got almost, uh, let's say, five billion dollar, six billion dollar. Where did that money go? Which communities got them? That's where we need representation and that's where I'm running because it's, it's absolutely not fair when you look south of Inian Turnpike, when you look at the state of parks, when you look at lack of recreational facilities. We don't have any. And it's not absolutely fair. And we have so many people living. We need to better represent our communities. We need to better allocate resources where they are needed. And with my leadership, with my experience, with my passion for our community that I've been advocating for and working in for the last twenty years, I know I can do it. And I'm the only candidate who can do it because I have the leadership, I have the skills and I have the knowledge how city council works, how government works. And because I'm an attorney, for sixteen years, I've been applying the law to cases. Now I will be legislating. And that what makes me the best candidate in this race. And I'm the only candidate who can do that. I want to, uh, give special shout out to Paul Ankil for, uh, when he learned that I was running from the very beginning, he has been supporting me. To Dr. Wadud Bouyan, um, Anthony Miranda, Ershad Bhai, and, um, uh, Haider Bhai and Muzaffar Bhai, um, Kazab Bhai and everyone who's been supporting me, who has been donating, who's been talking to voters on my behalf, who's been talking to their family members. Because without you, this is not possible. And I can promise you one thing, that I haven't changed since, uh, people have seen me since I was young. Because you have to stay close to who you are. You cannot forget who you are.
I'm trying to listen to the Zoom call in so little, so low.
Shoma, do me a favor. Can you make me a co-host as well? Because there's some people trying to get in and they have not been able to get in.
Oh, sure, okay.
Okay.
I made you the co-host. So this was what I need from the next three weeks. Talk to your voters, uh, tell them to come out and vote for me. Two, if you're able to do phone banking, let me know. You can, I can, um, the campaign can get in touch with you and give you a couple of pages to make some phone calls. Uh, use your social media to let people know. Use your social media to let people know. And we're going to have a couple of events. The campaign will be appraised if you'd like to join us in those events. So that's what I need right now. I need your votes, I need your support, and I need your outreach. And I'm happy to answer questions that Muzafar Bhai raised earlier. I know he's not here, I was waiting for him. But he asked two questions, two questions. How was my interaction with Jim Gennaro? Well, this is the first time that we actually had him in any of those, any of these candidates forum. And what was interesting, based on his answer to my question, to the questions posed to every candidate and also in response to my questions, he seemed to be looking at me as the only opponent in this race. Because he knows my experience, he knows my background, he knows my issues. And, you know, I'm very direct with him. I said, we do not need the leadership of the past in the future. We need leadership for now. And that leadership should be me because I can bring my expertise and knowledge. And I think he understand it, he understood that. And because indirectly, I did said that a number of times during the candidates forum. And I think he took note of that. So what this means is, this election is ours. We can win it, I can win it, and I can represent everybody here and everyone in these communities. We have a diverse community. And you need someone who has worked with everybody to represent everyone in this community. And the other, what I've been doing in terms of reach out to other communities, we've been reaching out to the Hispanic, the Black, the white votes from the very beginning, beginning with the day that even before the special election was announced and we have the petitioning date set up. I said from the very beginning, this election, my campaign, my election is about bringing representation to everybody for the issues that matter to everyone. When you cannot pay bills, when you are struggling over property taxes, struggling over retirement accounts, when you're struggling about your children's education, when you're struggling about keeping businesses open or going to bankruptcy, when you're putting yourself at risk by protecting this city, when you're worried about whether you're getting evicted or not. Those are the issues I am concerned about. Mr. Latif said, can you please forget stress and voting where it says you can vote up to five? You may choice only one you like, which is you. Yes, well, thank you. You don't have to vote for five. You can just vote for me. But that's an option under the new law that you have. You don't have to exercise it, but you have the option. So you can exercise your option or not option. You're not forced to vote for five people. So my, our outreach is there every day. Right now, I have about thirty people on my payroll out there working. And then we have on top of that volunteers and surrogates that are working, like you. So our campaign is going great. It's about winning, winning the right way. It's about going to voters, talking to each voter. And I don't take any vote for granted because I know what that vote means in countries where you don't have the right to vote. In our very own country, our rights have been under attack. So I don't take any vote by anyone for granted. And every vote that I earn, I'm earning. So a strategy is reach out, talking to, going to every community and talking to every voter and letting them know who I am and what issues I represent and what I can bring to the table for them. Because like I said, economy, housing, education, small business relief, safety, clean streets, these are all issues that matter to all of us, to you, me, and everyone who lives in District Four. And it will matter in other districts as well. So I will take any questions you have. If you want to find more about my campaign, you can always go to my website, Most of you know it by now. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wow, we have, we have a lot of police here. We also have a DHS Administrative Director, Joseph Vayad, who takes care of all the homeless conditions, all the end-of-the-line problems. Joseph, you want to say a few words? And do you have any questions for the candidate?
Yeah, I have a question for Suma Said. Mr. Putting me on the spot, Juave.
Go ahead. You know, we need the votes, we need everything we can get this, get her elected. You know, she is a minority within the minority. You know, we are the minority within the minority.
I'll do whatever I can do to help, you know?
Excellent, thank you so much.
Anything I can do to help if she need any volunteers or anything like that, I'll, you know, I'll extend a helping hand. It's not a problem.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yes, we can use volunteers. Two and a half weeks, more volunteers are always very, very helpful.
I see Lieutenant Shamsul Islam also joining us and our brother officer, also Mohammed Akram, who joined us. Shamsul Islam, do you have any questions for the candidate? Any words of encouragement? All right, Brother Mohammed Akram, he's always very supportive of the programs we hold. Brother Mohammed Akram, any questions for the candidate? Any comments?
Assalamualaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. I'm sorry, I'm a little late. I mean, yeah, I don't have a question. Yes, definitely, we're going to be support.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, this is the last leg of the race, as I said. I think the early voting, you can start January twenty-third, is that correct? You can start putting in the mailing ballots?
In ten days, yes.
Ten days, okay. And then February second is the, where you can go into the schools and you can vote in person, correct? So everybody, please, please put in the hat, put in your hat for this race. This is a very winnable seat. So we need to come out, we need to reach out to our folks in the district to come out and vote.
Yeah, Mr. Juave, I have, I mean, like I was saying that, I mean, like I spoke to a couple people that live in that area and I told those people that this is the voting system. So they were keep saying, oh, yes, we're going to do that. But when we say ranking are the new system, honestly, it's too early. And a lot of people, believe or not, they are not aware with that one, that we have to, we have to vote for this new system. So I believe, and make me correction, we need to educate to those people how to, those people have to pick. And I believe they have to pick five, not one. So one, two, three, four, five. He said, no, I'm going to pick only one. And trust me, if everybody going to say, I'm going to pick one, so I don't know what is going to be result come out. So I think so that people have to educate those people for this voting process. Make me correction if I'm wrong. Thank you.
No, Brother Akram, you're not wrong. So I want to get a couple of things clear. A voter is not required or is forced to pick five people. A voter can only pick one if he or she wants to. But at the same time, that voter has the option, legal option, to vote up to five people in order of preference. Number one, the candidate that you love. Number two, the candidate you like. Number three or four, and fifth, people you might like but not likes too much. So but you're not required to. And the other thing, yes, we're, I'm going to be a guinea pig for ranked choice voting. And this is New York City's first ranked choice voting. Unfortunately, I said this before to the media, when they reached out to me, two months ago, that Board of Elections and Campaign Finance Board have not done their job in educating voters what is ranked choice voting, what it means. So yes, many in our communities will not understand and will not be able to fully participate in ranked choice voting. But, you know, we are doing, we're picking up the slack as candidates, informing voters what is ranked choice voting and what it looks like. And we're doing as much as we can because we also have to campaign. So yes, we will really find out after February second how this ranked choice voting worked or did not work. But as of right now, what's important is people to go out and vote. And I'm asking everyone to vote for me. And then we're trying to educate people about the ranked choice voting. But I will say, we'll not be hundred percent successful because there's so little time with the pandemic. You can only do so much. There's no face-to-face gathering. And then the Board of Election and Campaign Finance Board have not invested in ranked choice voting education and resources. And those are the realities we're facing and dealing with. I think someone had a question.
I have a question for Ms. Suma Said.
Sure, yes, yes, Hider Bhai.
Okay. It's a very simple question, but it is, a lot of people are frustrated, especially landlord, that as you know, since the epidemic started, Governor Cuomo made a ruling that no eviction will take place. And he kept extending since January, I mean, last year until this year May. So there are some landlord have not receiving any rent from the tenant almost a year. As far as I know, few landlord, they cried to me, they told me, this is the situation. And the tenants, on the other hand, is receiving the unemployment as well as six hundred a week, now three hundred a week. So they are taking advantage of this situation. But this is controversial decision by the Cuomo and the mayor, which does not dictate to tell directly to the tenant not to pay the rent. It's indirectly saying to the tenant, you will not be evicted. There are high-rise, big, big landlords, they are also getting loser. And this small private house owner, they do not have any kind of mortgage relief, which means they have to pay the mortgage at the end of the day, no matter what. Even if they do not pay for one year, this mortgage amount will be added to the principal. It is not forgiven. Mayor or governor never said, okay, all the mortgage homeowner, the mortgage don't have to pay. They didn't say that. So this is a controversial statement by these two individual. My question to you, what is your Suma Said position clear cut? I have seen your brochure, on your campaign brochure, that you stand by the landlord, landlord by reducing and freezing the property tax as well as by not evicting the tenant. Please, my sister, be specific on that issue. Where do you stand if after the May, the governor extend again, which will be almost two years, to stop the eviction? Where do you stand?
So thank you for that question. And I will make my position clear, but I do want to give you a little backdrop of why this is. So just think about March, where this virus was attacking people. And people are getting killed left and right, and hospitals were overwhelmed. And then people were losing jobs left and right. And all of a sudden, you're... No, I'm getting there. No, no, I'm getting there.
Sorry to interrupt you. Wait, wait, sorry to interrupt because they have been getting more money than somebody else would have worked.
I know all the facts. So if you let me speak, I will, I'll get to, I'll get to what you really want to hear from me. So give me a minute. So you, so if all of a sudden, everybody lost jobs and those who could work from home did work from home, so most couldn't work from home. So the government had to come up with a solution where they had to toll the statute of limitations and moratorium. And it's true that many people did receive funds, help from the government. And many were in a position to pay rent, but did not. And it's also true that homeowners did not get the most benefit out of the federal government or the state government because all he could do is for variance, whether it's three months, six months, and it was not a great help. Because what that means, like, that amount is going to get added to the end at some point. You either have to pay that, you have to pay it to be current on your mortgage, or you're going to have to ask your bank to add it to the back of the loan. And then you'd be paying monthly. So what this means is, even though there are two stimulus packages that have been passed and very wealthy, very wealthy businesses have gotten many reliefs, that have, those reliefs have not trickled down to homeowners, struggling homeowners, one to two family homeowners or three family homeowners or even four or five or six. So even the federal government stimulus has not helped the homeowners. So what we need really is a package from the federal government to assist struggling homeowners who are struggling with mortgages. So not everyone who owns home have jobs. Many of them were laid off, many of them lost jobs, many of them have worked reduced hours. And then on top of that, they're not getting rent from their tenants. But if, if, if there was no moratorium, you would have millions of people out on the street, children. We don't have enough infrastructure to house these people. So this was the middle ground to prevent further infection, further spread of the virus. But what we need to do, we need to do right by homeowners who are struggling. And that's why we need the federal funding so desperately. Because the state doesn't have it, the city doesn't have it. And I certainly don't want more property taxes on the back of struggling homeowners in my district or anywhere in New York City. Because that's what's going to end up happening. And that's what I'm proposing, that I'm going to fight against it because that's not right. As far as supporting tenants, if you, if one cannot become a landlord without having tenants, and if the tenants are not also protected, where are these people going to go? So I'm against illegal evictions and retaliation by landlords. At the same time, I recognize, and I will, I will fight, and I'm pledging that I'm going to fight for homeowners because, especially struggling homeowners, small homeowners, because you're not in the business of real estate. You're in the business of your living and you're using that extra income to pay your mortgage or save for your retirement, to put your kids through college or saving for the wedding of your child or children, so, or vacation. I know the struggles and I know what homeowners and everyone going through in this district. But we have to look out for everybody. And I know it has been tough because many of my friends, family members, they all have been going through this. And I'm going to be fighting very hard to make sure we get the funding under the Biden administration and you get the funding as a homeowner. That was a long answer, but it has to, it had to be long because there's so many variables involved, so many parties are involved, and there's so many issues involved.
Thank you so much. I'd like to just, you know, before we go to closing, towards closing, Lieutenant Prince Alam is here and I believe Lieutenant Shamsul Islam is also here. If they have any comments or questions for you, I'd like to ask them to ask it now. I'll unmute both of them so whoever can get to the mic first. Sergeant Siddiqui, your mic working now?
Let me try, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, that's perfect, yes.
I don't know what happened, usually it works fine.
I don't know what happened, usually it works fine. Salam aleikum everyone.
Waalaikumsalam.
Thank you, Jonathan B, for inviting us. Great discussion, you know, it's a balance. At the end, in order for us to survive or live, we gotta have a balance, you know? You cannot just put one community down the drain and lift up the other community. To keep it balanced, I think Suma Said is the perfect candidate. I seen few things from other people, like one-sided. You cannot work in one-sided, you have to represent the whole community, not one community. So I think she brings the balance for the community. I think, which is gonna help us down the line. And of course, all the best to her, and I don't live in her district, but she has my support, because I know her from prior, before she even running for the, for the District Twenty-four. And the friends that I have that lives in the neighborhood, of course, I'm gonna tell them to vote for her, and we just have to make sure that we tell her, "Vote for one." Because you start voting for five people, that could bring a problem for her. So pick one and go with her, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, good, good suggestion. How about Lieutenant Prince Alm? I see Brother Ms. Baoudin is here as well. Do you want to say a few words? I know you've supported Mumita. Are you the correct Ms. Baoudin I'm speaking about? Can I see your face? I want to put you on the spot now.
Oh my God, very straight, straight for life.
Come on, I'm gonna put him on the spot right now, come on. Brother Ms. Baoudin, let's, let's at least see your face. Okay. All right, so I guess he's here to listen to what's going on. But you know, our choice is Suma Said, she is an establishment. She's the establishment candidate here. We know her for a very, very long time, we know her morals and ethics. And she has, alhamdulillah, received the campaign financing, there are no issues with her. And so we'll vote for her as a number one candidate from the Jamaica Muslim community here. And this is why I urge everyone to do so. Everyone who's listening on USA News Online and other forums, please take this back to the community, make sure you vote Suma Said number one. We, this is our time, this is our time. Others have taken our votes and have taken pictures with us, but have not given us anything in return. So we need our own representation now. We also have Imam Yassin joining just now. And so if we don't have any other things to discuss, I will ask in a few minutes Imam Yassin. I don't want to put him right on the spot right now to give us a closing dua. Brother Nasir Ali Khan, Paul, I know you're very vocal, is there any advice you want to give?
Only one advice, can you hear me, brother?
Of course, we can hear you.
I will have one advice for the voter. I'm the supporter of Suma Said, that try to keep in mind, if you vote number one to Suma Said, that means Suma Said will be advanced, five vote. She'll go advance five vote, then other four candidates. It's a beautiful math, you should understand. It's not only you are voting for her, you are putting her another five vote ahead. So this is very important. So I'll request everybody who is Suma Said supporter, please, on that day, vote for Suma Said number one, and she will remain number one, Insha Allah.
Thank you so much for your comments. Everybody, if, you know, we can also do phone banking. Shoma and Yvonne, I think we should collect everyone's numbers here, and we'll definitely do a phone banking for you if, for example, we cannot come out, you know, for some of us, the elderly, to, it will be difficult to be on the ground. But those of us who can be on the ground, such as my director, Joseph Vayad, and myself, and our strong officers, we'll definitely have boots on the ground. Sheikh Imam Yassin, I know you have beautiful, wise words always. Do you want to say anything and then some advice? And then you can take us to closing, Insha Allah, it's nine oh nine, we started at eight.
Assalamualaikum wa rahmatullah, sorry to join late. I just want to say that I love you all.
Thank you.
And we are very proud that we have a sister, Sister Suma Said, who's, who had the courage to jump on this journey and adventure and be, become the best representative. So we're very, very proud of you, Sister Suma. Please go ahead, rest assured that behind you, you have an army of good, good fighters, Insha Allah ta'ala. So don't be afraid, don't panic, we're behind you, Insha Allah ta'ala. And we ask Allah Azza wa Jalla that He will put Barakah, a lot of Barakah, in everything that you do, and you will leave a good legacy behind you for generations to come, Insha Allah ta'ala.
Mashallah. Jazakallah Khair, any additional comments? Before I ask Sheikh Yassin to take us to a closing dua with some mix of Arabic and English, maybe even some French. Okay, if not, then go ahead, take us to a closing dua, Insha Allah.
Bismillah. Wa alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa rahim. Wa alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa rahim. Wa alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa rahim. Oh Allah make us among those, those who have believed and those who have done good and those who advise each other to do good in this life and hereafter. Oh Allah, for a lot of Barakah in everything and anything that we do for Islam and Muslims. Oh Allah, make us the source of happiness for this country, for the residents of the country. Oh Allah, give us better opportunities so that we can become the better ambassadors of Islam on this land. Oh Allah, help us and help our children find a better environment to, to practice their deen, to practice their identity, to become better and proud Muslims on this country and on this land. Oh Allah, anyone who started and planted a seed of hope for Muslims in this country, oh Allah, we ask you that you help him and give him support, heavenly support and support of the Muslims and the community. Oh Allah, help us to always stay united, brothers and sisters all the time. Oh Allah, help us to help one another in this life and hereafter. Allahumma amin. Subhanakallah wa bhamdika. Nashtaghfiruka wa nashobu ilaiq. Amin naswa na wazalna anfusana. Fa filna fa inna wa la yafir dzunuba illa ant. Allahumma salli ala sayyidina muhammadin fil aawarinina wa alaaxireen. Wa salli ala sayyidina muhammadin fil malaa il aala ilayyum ad deen. Subhanarabbika rabbil azza ti amma yasifun. Wa salaamun ala musaliim. Walhamduillahi rabbil alamin. Maghzi. That's French.
Thank you all. If you have not had the chance to contribute, you can go to sfornewyork.com/donate. You can always reach out to Shoma or myself. And if you want to volunteer, please reach out to her or myself, and we'll go from there, Insha Allah. Thank you so much, everyone.